Hello? Anybody there? Hello, hello? Anybody there?
Robert.
Hey, Robert. We didn't start yet, but we'll, uh, we'll get started in like three minutes or so.
Okay. I'm on by phone. Hopefully this will work. Give me the agenda right there. No one's behind you.
All right.
Oh, it's just very difficult. If in doubt, pull off somewhere where we can go unfinished. You've got to go through a tunnel and draw all of Baltimore. And as I remember, it's tough to follow the directions. So if in doubt, just pull off at an exit, find some place where we can sit. Okay. So you're gonna have to turn around until that way at the bridge area and get back on the highway going left. Jacob? Jacob?
Yes, sir.
Hello? Oh, okay. I'm, we're driving, so I'm just gonna stay muted until I need to get on. Okay?
All right. Sounds good. It'll be just about a minute, then we'll, we'll get started.
Okay. All right. No problem.
Good afternoon. It is 4:00 PM. This is the regular meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance is the spirit of the United States of America, and to deliver public for which it stands, one nation, under God, and individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Members present include myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, our Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim is present via Zoom. Supervisor Barrett is excused. Our Office Manager is Julie Heilica. She's here, as is Engineer John Tressler, and our Solicitor, Ron Karasak. Uh, we do not have any announcements, uh, for today, but our first order of business is the minutes of the March 23rd, uh, meeting. Robert, have you had the chance to review said minutes?
Uh, yes, I, yes, I've reviewed, and, uh, I make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Second. Any questions to debate? All in favor? All right. Robert, can you hear us? Robert?
Okay, um, I, I vote affirmative to, uh, approve the minutes.
Okay. Sorry. Just wanted to make sure that we add it for the record.
Yeah.
All right. Do not have any public hearings or plans to act on this evening. New addition to our agenda are reports, and this is for our Solicitor and our Engineer. They're not necessarily written reports, but they are just in case something comes up, uh, that we need to address later on in the meeting or any sort of reminders. So, Ron, do you have any, anything that's not listed here that you want to remind us?
No, let me just look at my report. I printed it off just to make sure I didn't miss anything, as I do every month. Uh, let's see here. Now, everything's on the agenda. I was concerned with scheduling those two conditional use hearings, and scheduling the amendment for the Economic Development District. And you sent me the verification for the manmadeous complaint, so I think I'm okay.
I think the only thing that I forgot to bring up that you did send us was the legal bills for Delaware Water Gap, uh, or I should say, not the, not our friend Delaware Water Gap, but, uh, Water Development, um, were adding up to about forty-five thousand. I think you just wanted to clarify something on that.
Yeah, I asked, uh, our, uh, township Office Manager to send me the schedules to see what they say. And I don't want to say right now that I think we're up the creek there, but let's just wait that till we get further down on the agenda because there is, uh, something with respect to these schedules and conditional uses on, uh, new business, uh, James.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. Thank you. Ron? John? Anything for the...
I have nothing new to bring up at this point.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. So without further ado, we will start with, uh, new business, discussing Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area, uh, potentially becoming a national park. We have John Donahue and Don Miles here. I am going to, uh, go to the computer so we can hear this for anyone that's...
Put that on Zoom. Robert, if you are able, can you please mute yourself?
It's gonna be tough.
Thank you.
I will. I'm sorry. I was on mute.
Robert, yeah. Help me out. Okay. Lenape or Lenape or some other way. Lenapi.
That's their preferred, uh, background.
Okay. Like Lenapi.
And just to be confusing, they're their official tribe name, federal government, Delaware.
Just Delaware?
No, there's, there's, there's three tribes.
Okay.
One's Delaware, Oklahoma, one's Delaware.
Okay.
And yet, they ask us to address them as Lenapi, so we do whatever, we do whatever they ask of us.
Very good. Well, that's a good idea. That's what I do with my wife, so that's fine.
We have been asked to use the word Lenapi with respectful.
Sure. So, uh, thank you very much for, uh, making time for us today. And, uh, you know, basically, our, uh, purpose here is, is informational. I think at, at some point in the future, we will send a letter of support and ask you to support the concept of, uh, transforming Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area into a national park and preserve. And, uh, you know, we believe it's a sustainable vision for this area for the future, and that it recognizes the homeland of the Lenapi, who are the first people in this area. And, uh, the, uh, so, uh, ba- basically, this is right out of the Delaware Water Gap Foundation document from the National Park Service. The purpose of Delaware Water Gap NRA, DWA, is their, uh, actual acronym, and Midi for the Minnesota Seismic Recreation Area, is to preserve the natural, cultural, scenic resources and values of the Delaware River Valley, and to provide opportunities for resource-based recreation, education, enjoyment, in close proximity to the most densely populated region of the nation. And this, this is important because even all the way back to the Congressional Record and to President Johnson's, uh, comments when he signed the laws that created this park, he talked about this being within a day's drive of fifteen percent of the country's population, which at that time was thirty million, now it's sixty million. And so, the purpose of this park was really to provide nature-based recreation and education for all of its people in what, at the time, they called the megalopolis. He also had some rather disparaging remarks about the, uh, the manner in which these urban folks lived in poverty, et cetera, et cetera. But I think the most important thing is that, uh, a actual legislation was to dam the river, create a man-made lake, and then to allow for recreation around that lake. As we all know, the river was never dammed, the lake was never created, but the park was created anyway. And it's always been a national park, really. Um, Cindy Dunn, the Secretary of, uh, DCNR here in Pennsylvania, when this first came out as an idea, came out unsolicited and said, you know, it was never a recreation area, it was never a dam, it's always been a national park. And we really need additional resources like this, particularly in the eastern part of Pennsylvania. So, this is another document from the National Park Service, uh, released in 2014, where they talk about Delaware Valley National Park and Preserve can be the first national park in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. There are units of the national park system in North State and in the other states, but there are no, no national parks. And even according to the National Park Service definition and Congressional Research Office definition, a national park is one of the crown jewels of the system, uh, best known for natural attractions, and generally considered to be the most strictly protected units of the park. So what we're talking about here is not, uh, we're not talking about taking any state lands or taking any private land. We're talking about the existing lands that already are, is part of the federal enclave, the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area, and making part of it into a national park, mostly, uh, and most of it into a national preserve. And the national preserve will be, uh, actually, uh, a more appropriate designation for the kind of recreational activities that we have here. There's very few, if any, recreation areas that have the extent and volume of hunting that we have here in our recreation area. Most of them have, you know, maybe some duck hunting in the fall or something like that. But very few of them have hunting essentially six days a week year-round, like we do here. So, uh, why do we want to, uh, make this place? Uh, this is a, a great example of landscape scale connectivity. Uh, DWA is the keystone of protected natural landscapes. It sits at the heart of almost four hundred thousand acres of connected land. In the, uh, recent years, the National Park Service purchased the Girl Scout Camp, which connected it to a couple of hunting, uh, clubs right up by where Peak is located. And then that's connected to over two hundred thousand acres of state land, uh, forest, game lands, parkland. And, and then, uh, the federal lands and the river, and on the New Jersey side, all of the lands are intricately interconnected in a mosaic. And altogether, it's about four hundred thousand acres of connected public land, eighty miles from Manhattan. And that's a pretty spectacular and unique thing. Um, the Kidatini Ridge is the northern terminus of many species and the southern terminus of many other species. And of course, the ecological integrity of the river is important to all of us in the entire watershed, and particularly to the people in Philadelphia who use it for a great majority of their drinking water. So I do want to separate out why we want to do this from the potential benefits that might occur from it. Because we want to do it because it's the right thing to do, because the park deserves it, recognition, and because the people in these surrounding states that enjoy this place also deserve to have a national park without having to drive five hundred miles to Acadia or three hundred and fifty miles to Shenandoah, and to our resources meet all of the criteria of a national park. Um, these are some of the benefits that we think will accrue. From, uh, this national park designation is going to create a greater awareness of these resources and bring prestige. And we believe that that's going to lead to the local people and the visitors just treating the resources better and making a better effort to preserve them. We believe that it's going to be a better opportunity to fund all the deferred maintenance. Delaware Water Gap is one of the eight parks in the system that contain sixty percent of all the infrastructure in the national park system. And yet, the other seven parks all have budgets two and three times higher than Delaware Water Gap. So, uh, we believe this will be an opportunity to gain more money, to get the roads fixed, the bridges, et cetera, which, uh, as you know, is in constant and ongoing battle. We also believe the preserve is a more accurate description of what actually happened in what we believe will end up being about ninety percent of the park that exists now. So, uh, we believe it'll support the local economy. That, two years ago, they did this at New River Gorge, and it's recent reports from the travel industry indicate that they've had a significant increase of visitation as a result of creating the national park. And that visitation translates into gasoline and translates into rooms, meals at restaurants, et cetera. So I think it'll, this will, uh, create the exact same kind of, um, results. And, and people will say, well, you can't guarantee that. I can't even guarantee the sun will rise tomorrow. But, but I can guarantee you one thing. If we don't do something, the roads are going to continue to get worse, the, uh, infrastructure is going to continue to be overburdened, and the resources are going to suffer because if you don't have designated places for people to go to the beach, to enjoy the trail, where they have bathrooms and parking and facilities, they just crash on down to the river where there are no bathrooms or other facilities, and the resources, the damage would quite a bit more from that kind of activity. Um, and so this designation will recognize the singularly spectacular natural and cultural resources found in New Jersey and Pennsylvania along the longest undammed river in the east, the eastern United States. And it recognizes the extraordinary complex of all these things coming together. The Appalachian Trail, the nine-eleven trail, the scenic and recreational river, the Kidatini Ridge, hundreds of thousands of acres of connected public land, in an area with twelve thousand years of documented human occupation, and all within the cultural landscape of the Lenapi Hulking, the Lenapi homeland. So we believe this gem of our national heritage belongs in the jewel crown of the national park system, where it has always belonged. So, we've tried to, as we talk with people, we listen to the concerns and questions they raise. Some people have said it'll cause a toll through the park. That's, uh, this has nothing to do with fees or tolls. Last year, you might remember, the visitor use management plan the park brought to the public included an entrance fee, which would have generated millions of dollars a year, and would have stayed right here in the local area. But it was rejected by the public, and it was rejected by the national park system. So it's not an issue. I, you know, it, they could bring back fees or have a discussion anytime they want, but it's got nothing to do with national park and preserve designation. Increased traffic. We recognize, as, as we all do, the last couple of years, we've seen a huge amount of people coming to visit the park during COVID. And, uh, you know, just at two sites, the Dingmans Falls and Remuskill Falls, people were parking up and down. were parking up and down the roads, two, three miles in each direction, walking to the entrance and then walking all the way up the hill. It's, it's about two miles to get up to the Dingmans Falls. Um, so those people are going to continue to come, and this is an opportunity for us to address that infrastructure that makes visitation possible in the most sustainable ways. Um, and potential resource impact. I think that, uh, and I believe every, the visitor use management plan that the park has adopted indicates that, you know, having the right kind of infrastructure actually limits the amount of impact that the visitation is going to have on the resources, as opposed to just letting people go and do things wherever they feel like it. Um, so, uh, only existing federal public lands are part of the proposal. You will hear a lot of noise out there, people are saying we're taking over state lands. Not true, it's not part of the proposal, which you now have in your possession. Uh, states are going to be encouraged to cooperate and collaborate in whatever manner they determine it's best for their citizens and for America. Uh, there's no change of existing state lands open, sportsmen, there's no change in regulations, uh, there's no change, uh, there's approximately, uh, I'm, I just added this when I'm accused of being against hunting. I added three thousand acres to the recreation area when I was the superintendent, and they were all open to hunting immediately. But the concept that this is an anti-hunting proposal is simply not true. Uh, we're hoping that any eventual legislation will authorize additional land for willing sellers that'll replace any lands that become dedicated to the national park. Um, if you take some of that land and make it a national park, there is no hunting in the national park or any national park. But what we believe is that making the park bigger and by adding those lands back into the preserve, it's going to make it a better place for all of the visitors. Uh, in West Virginia, what they created was ninety percent preserve and ten percent national park. That's kind of the model that we're using. So, uh, there's a lot of different ways you can do the math. It's a, um, they authorize boundaries about seventy thousand acres. I think at this point, the National Park Service owns about sixty-six thousand acres in feet, so ten percent of some figure. And we also believe that it's important for all the people that live around here. We do get huge amounts of visitation from urban people as the park was intended to accommodate. Uh, there's forty-two million people in the three states that surround the park, uh, sixty million of people that live within a day's drive. There's sixty-four national parks, and only eleven of them are in the eastern United States. And that's including like St. Croix and Virgin Islands and Fort Jefferson, uh, which a lot of people aren't able to reach. Not everyone has the resources. Uh, I grew up in Brooklyn, uh, you know, when I first became a national park superintendent, I listened to every superintendent talk about how their parents would drive to Yellowstone every year. Well, all I could say is we didn't have a car, so we didn't go to Yellowstone. Went to New Jersey once on a bus. But there's a lot of people that live around here that can benefit from being able to visit this national park. And there's other things that would go into the legislation. Um, and it respects and strengthens, one of the proposals is to create a Lenape Cultural and Education Center to share with all of the visitors that come here, at four or five million people a year. You know, in ten years, you're talking about fifty million people that could be educated about the, uh, first people that lived around here. And, uh, we're, we are, uh, in the process of discussing with the three tribes, the three federally recognized tribes, the Delaware Nation, the Delaware Indians of, uh, Oklahoma, and the, uh, Stockbridge Monsey in Wisconsin. And those three tribes that were actually resident right here and were brought out west during the Trail of Tears. They continue to have a close association with the park, um, and they, they visit here once or twice a year. At one point, we had a program that was funded by the Susquehanna de Roslin Power Line that would bring the youth from the three tribes here just to become familiar with the homeland and to learn about it. So, one of the things about, uh, hunting is that we believe that, uh, national park and preserve will actually provide better long-term protection for hunting in terms of being able to, uh, enshrine those hunting rights perpetuity. And the national park section can create a permanent wildlife nursery adjacent to the preserve that will allow a continual amount of, uh, wildlife to be available to hunters. There's an article, a link in the, uh, program we sent you. Theodore Roetzel Conservation Partnership article explains why, in their opinion, national, uh, hunting areas adjacent to national parks are actually the best places that you can hunt. Uh, one, because they have wildlife nursery, and also because some people look to find trophy animals, and without, uh, uh, some kind of place for them to grow a little bit older than two years, they are never going to achieve that status. So, Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area with the four hundred thousand acres, protecting lands, watersheds, wildlife gardens, uh, that preserve and connect essential habitat, uh, is inspiring place for us. The Delaware River, the longest undammed river in the eastern United States, the Appalachian Trail, the nine eleven trail, is also a huge carbon thing and a migratory highway for climate adaptation in the future. It's a biodiversity goldmine. And, uh, that's essentially what we wanted to share with you informationally. I want to thank you, thank the First People for the thousands of years of stewardship, thank the National Park Service for five, almost six decades of planning and documentation, and thank you, the local community, these neighbors, for hopefully what will be your support. And then at the end, you'll see there are links, and I'm going to let Don add some things now.
Uh, I, before your minutes, I wanted to further explain who our group is. We're led by John Donnie, who lives in Dingmans Ferry and at Warzen. Thirty, thirty years of experience working in the National Park Service all over the country. Um, I live in Bethlehem, solid miles. I, uh, am a retired attorney, and I am the co-chair of the Pennsylvania Sierra Club, which is one of the, uh, half dozen largest chapters of the Sierra Club, about thirty thousand members. Uh, also, in our effort into the New Jersey Sierra Club, which, uh, is almost as large. And we were recently joined by the New York Sierra Club. Uh, so all three of those Sierra Clubs are behind this. We also have a number of other organizations, in, including, uh, Penn Environment, and also, uh, the Appalachian Mountain Club, whose, uh, Atlantic offices in Bethlehem, I was over my house. Um, and we have had a number of public Zoom meetings where people can connect and ask questions, and we have had overwhelming support. Before we even went to many media, we had stories in newspapers and radio stations and television stations. We had a story in, in the Philadelphia Inquirer, we didn't even, I know about that. As John said, the Secretary of Pennsylvania, DCNR, came out without us even talking to her, saying that she was in, in favor of this. Um, during the public meetings on Zoom, I always say, tell me something that you want to do at the, at this park, and I'll let you know whether you can do it. Nobody can come up with anything that you can't do. But it's actually more than places like Yellowstone. Uh, there's not a lot of mountains in Yellowstone, so you can't rock climb. You can rock climb in this park. You can, you can bicycle, you can hike, you can fish, you can birdwatch, you can hunt, and you can also, uh, in the wintertime, cross-country ski. You can't, um, so you can't come up with anything that you, you can't do here. And I just want to briefly reemphasize the idea of the equity of this. If you are in New Jersey or Pennsylvania and you want to go to a national park, you have to drive almost five hundred miles to Acadia in Maine, or over three hundred miles to Shenandoah National Park in Virginia. There are forty-two million people in those three states, and a lot of those folks don't have the resources to visit the western national parks. My partner Catherine and I, back in September, took three weeks off, and we visited thirteen of the western national parks.
Wow.
You have to be, you have to have the time, you have to be retired like we were. You have to have the savings to, to do that. Lots of people don't. Also, the equity within, as John said, within the national park system. A number of people, more or less four and a half million, come annually to the Water Gap Recreation Area, has come to Yellowstone. Everybody knows Yellowstone, it's the most known park, and yet their budget is three times the budget of the Water Gap. We have had some people say, you know, there's going to be more people and, and the infrastructure's not fair. That's true, there are going to be more people. As John likes to say, if you're living in Europe or, or Middle East or Asia someplace, and you come to the United States, you buy a book of the national parks, you don't buy a book of the national recreation area. So there will be more people. But what we say in response is, if we do nothing, there will continue to be not enough rangers, not enough parking lots, not enough beaches, not enough campsite. Roads will still be sorry, John, the roads are crappy. None of that's going to change, because John tried for ten years to get a major increase in his budget and, and, and was not able to. But there's the equity of the people in this part of the country not having a real good national park to go to. Things we think of, Statue of Liberty, Valley Forge, Gates of Earth, they're not national parks, they're part of the national park system.
Right.
So, we're kind of entitled, there are only eleven national parks out of the sixty-five east of, of, of the Mississippi, and we're also entitled to a better share of the national park system. Why should the people here have to go to the recreation area and have all the things missing that are missing? If you go to Yellowstone, those things are there. Um, the, the situation now, for example, I'll read about it here, a lot of people come from New Jersey and New York to the east side, to the Jersey side, and go to the beach. Parking lots full. Go into the woods, and they bring their, their grills and their chairs, and they, and they go swimming in the river. And I know that you read the stories where some of them die because there's no, there's no life cars. There needs to be more beaches, there needs to be more of everything. Not because it's going to be a national park, but because the people are already, unless it's a national park, John has said, we can't guarantee more money. But we can guarantee, as John learned from being superintendent for all those years, we can guarantee that if it's not a national park, there won't be any money. So it's a question of equity, fairness, for the people of New Jersey and New York, Pennsylvania. And it's also a question of equity for the recreation area that not getting its fair shake of the budget prepares your place. But I went to Yellowstone, it's magnificent.
Right.
So, this place, as John described, this is a jewel in the northeast. If you look on a map, northeast, and you look for a big green area where you could put a national park, we will, Catskills, we're not giving up. Adirondack, a park, New York's not giving up. There's nothing else. This is it. And we think this is the time to do it. We think we have sympathetic, uh, public officials, we have a sympathetic White House. Our close work with the Lenape Nation is going to be helpful because the head of the National Park Service is a Native American, and the head of the Interior Department is a Native American. And I joke with John, our last argument is going to be the easiest. President Biden, he'd like to be the president that creates the first national park in your home state, which, by the way, is four hundred miles from you, frankly. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Sure. Well, first, thank you very much for, for coming. It was a very thorough and very interesting, you know, presentation. Uh, as someone who frequents the Appalachian Trail with my family and, and my girlfriend, I, I think it's important that we continue to preserve those areas, so that's really exciting. Uh, I like that you addressed the, uh, vehicle fee thing that was proposed a couple of years back, because that's, that's probably the number one thing. We've only gotten a couple of emails, uh, about that, but that was pretty much the question. I, I think for me, what I would ask, um, potentially, hunting is, is permitted in a preserve as opposed to park. So, you're talking about replacing some of the land that would become part of it, and it'd be all voluntary, because that's, that's the only other thing that I hear people talk about, because I think everyone is sensitive to, uh, what happened here many, many years ago, and we're all grateful for the work of Nancy Shakitis and, and her group. Um, who was a resident of Smithfield, by the way. You're awesome.
I was met her, it was, I was very honored to meet her.
And she is, I, I think you may have presented in Stroud Township already, where her granddaughter, Jennifer, is a supervisor too. That's exciting.
Well, we, we are friendly with hunters, we are working with them. There are some individual hunters that have contacted government officials with misinformation, they're not going to be hunting, lots of land's going to be taken away. As John said, the vast majority of what is now the recreation area, more than three quarters, still be for hunting. Uh, and the other thing to keep in mind, we're not trying to disparage them, John has attendance figures, hunters annually, two percent are the visitors of the park. But it would not be fair for that two percent to threaten, let the other ninety-eight percent have a national park.
Sure, sure, understood.
They'll be able to hunt almost as many, I'll put it that way.
Sure.
You know, a sportsman, uh, one of the definitions of sportsmen is, uh, fair and generous. At the end of the day, uh, we anticipate that, uh, a lot of the sportsman's organizations are going to be with us. There's a lot to take in, a lot to think about, but, uh, you know, uh, I, I anticipate the, the showing, uh, the, uh, accepting the, uh, what'll be the, uh, the best opportunity for the best number of people.
I forgot to say something as chair of the Sierra Club, because people always confuse by it, the Sierra Club does not oppose something. The Sierra Club believes hunters are conservation.
Yeah, it's funny, that's, I, I never heard anyone say the opposite, but that's, that's fascinating that that's a thing. I, I think in other areas, uh, particularly as you go north, you're starting to see some signs and stuff like that that say no national park. I haven't seen that down here. Like, a lot of people here, I mean, we, most people here live right next to it, uh, you know, in, in Smithfield, and particularly our neighbors also in Delaware Water Gap Borough. Um, I think that everyone would just like to see infrastructure updates, I think that's the biggest thing, uh, you know, particularly, you've all been to that parking lot on Mountain Road in Delaware Water Gap. Uh, so, that's probably one of the areas that needs some improvement. I would hope that legislators are supportive, at least from our area.
I think there are, John said something that was funny the other day, it was a letter to one of the papers, and I looked at it and he phoned me on the phone, and said it was remarkable, every single statement in the letter to the editor was untrue.
Wow.
Hundred percent. Yeah, well, there was on TV saying that, uh, we were conducting this in secret, uh, we've been, so you wouldn't know about it, so it was a secret, but we've been in every media market in the country, so I don't think that that's true.
We're, we're familiar with individuals that think, uh, what we're doing is secret, even though we're on Zoom right now and advertised constantly, so.
We believe that most of the hunters are very spare people.
Absolutely.
It's an admirable hobby.
For sure.
It helps, helps the environment. I don't know, there's too many deer.
Yes.
Um, and it's unfortunate that there's a minority that writes letters, as, as John saw, that every statement in the letter is not what was real. There's going to be, there's going to be fees, you know, it's just, you won't be able to lie anymore.
Right.
Well, essentially, we don't see any impact on the township, there's no impact on fishing, there's no fees involved, none of the negative things that are being put out there are, have any major implications. You have these proposals, um, any comments or additions that you think, uh, should be put in there, you just let us know?
Hello, uh, this is, this is Robert. Uh, I'd just like to add my voice to Jacobs to say it's a very exciting idea. And furthermore, as a National Park Golden Age Pass holder, I'm certainly looking forward to other places where I can use it.
Great. I've got a question if I can, gentlemen. What is your timeline for this? And is there anything specific that you would ask the board, whether that be a letter of support or, but what are you looking for, for the board, and what is the timeline that you are asking for that information or other items from?
So honestly, uh, somewhere between as soon as possible and as long as it takes. It's a long walk, but we, there's no reason why it couldn't happen quickly. The, uh, and so we- The, uh, and so we, you know, the, uh, in New River Gorge, the actual legislation was attached to the first COVID relief that.
Oh, wow.
I mean, basically, we're working now on, on putting together a map. We held off until this point because we wanted to invite all these constituencies to participate, including the, we, you know, we've met with the, uh, the Wildlife Council in New Jersey, uh, the, uh, New Jersey Outdoor, uh, Alliance, uh, Farm Zero, things like that. We had an article published in the Pennsylvania Federation Sportsman Association Newsletter and, uh, you know, we're going to continue to work with everybody to see.
Sure. I plan to spend some work from the grassroots. That's why we're, we're talking to the.
And we really appreciate it.
First and the local municipalities. We're not going to the White House yet.
Right.
A letter of support from the township to John anytime would be great.
Letter of support. We probably will ask for a letter of support, uh, in the near future.
Okay.
That's something you want to.
Following up on the question, uh, asked by the office manager for letter support and timeframe. Is there anything else you want to send to the township before that letter of support is drafted? Or do you believe we have enough to do that based upon what we have here?
I, I think, well, you have basically what we've been sharing with people. Uh, as more information develops, uh, we'll send it.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to wait for the letter of support for that to come in or no, just send the letter of support now.
And I would also respectfully suggest that if you get any of the sort of complaints that we mentioned to you, rather than take up your time responding to them, if you would just send them to John, we'll respond to those people so that you don't have to.
Appreciate it. Is there anything else from?
No, I, I, in Upper Mount Bethel, we didn't deal with this. We dealt with another issue with Wild and Scenic River. And that caused all kinds of yesterday. I can't, my jet ski, I can't, they won't let me do this. They won't let me. So that's a whole other, other issue, but I'm sort of aware of the public, uh, concerns.
Thank you.
There already is a Wild and Scenic River.
Thank you very much for being so kind.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and I'm sure we'll absolutely be in touch.
And for putting it at the beginning, that was.
Absolutely. No worries.
Thank you everyone.
You have a safe trip home and stay healthy.
Yes. Thank you very much. Yeah, right. Great. Well, that was an exciting presentation. We look forward to hearing more about that. Um, I also want to take a second. My friend Trenton Greens, Greenswick is present. He's, uh, visiting from Polk Township, but he's getting active in the local, uh, government scene and we're thrilled to have him here.
Trenton, could you start your last one for the paper?
G R E E N W E I G.
Excellent. So our next item up is, uh, considering the schedule for, uh, two conditional use hearings. The township received two conditional use applications for auto sales and economic development zone. Ron, do you have?
Uh, according to the paperwork that I have, uh, the time for the hearing expires on May 16th, unless of course the applicant would agree in writing to an extension or agree on the record. And by that, that would mean a stenographic record at the start of another hearing that they would agree to accept. So I, I would suggest that the board selects a date sometime in May because these two plans will be reviewed by the Township Planning Commission tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, and then go from there. Now, you don't have to wait till May. You could do it later on in the month, obviously. But that's, that's your call as to how you want to set those up. I, you know, would I set them up for the same night? Probably.
Yeah.
Same issue, although hopefully they will not take very long, but.
Sure.
So however the board wants to do that, but that's, that's the date, May 16th, unless the applicants agree to accept. I just spoke with our very competent and illustrious township engineer and he said that those plans may not be as complete as they should be. So I don't know where that's all going to end up, but we'll see that tomorrow night at Planning Commission.
Fair. So John, would it be your recommendation that maybe we give them until May 11th? Or should we schedule a date for after that just because, and then ask for an extension if they're not complete? I, I, I would like for this to not be another, uh, instance where we have repeated extensions.
Right.
Because we put them on an accelerated timeline or something like that.
I guess the problem you have though, if you ask for an extension and they don't give it to you and you don't have a date scheduled, then, then you have a problem. I would schedule the date, but I would also ask for an extension.
Do you think there's enough for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation?
When they come in tomorrow night, I don't mean to speak over you, Mr. Chair, but we'll see what they have to say. I mean, it may well be, once they hear John's comments and Planning Commission comments, they may say, oh, timeout. Well, okay, we'll, we'll grant you an extension and skip the hearing up for June or something. But we'll wait to see what they say. But I agree with John, with your permission, I think we should at least get the hearing date set up. I won't advertise it right away. Someone will spend that money, but at least we know moving forward when that day is and we can tell the applicants tomorrow night at planning, this isn't going to be the date unless you're going to extend or get it ready.
Right. Robert, how do you feel about, uh, May 11th? That's our regular, uh, meeting at four o'clock that day. Would you be able to? Okay.
Yeah, good for me.
All right. So I, I would move then that we authorize advertisement for the tentative date of May 11th, uh, at the, at the, yep, at the solicitor's discretion based upon the Planning Commission's recommendation. Do I hear a second? Second motion by myself, second by Mr. Loveenheim. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. So Trenton, just so you understand the context that you walked in just when that started, we have two conditional uses, uh, conditional use applications and those are essentially in municipal land use. Those are for items that have an potentially extraordinary effect on surrounding properties or the township. So they are not allowed just for the land development plan. They have to be, you have to get permission to basically apply for your land development anyway. So we have two of those and the Planning Commission takes it up tomorrow night and then we'll see where it goes from there. Uh, next up is, uh, scheduling a hearing for the Economic Development Zone Technical Amendment Ordinance. Um, we've worked on this project for quite a while and with significant cooperation from both Planning Commissions and amazing work by our, uh, appointed and, uh, appointed staff and our professionals. Um, I'd like to see us vote on this on April 27th. We addressed all the comments from the Monroe County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission was generous enough to schedule an additional meeting last month to recommend our adoption of this, so.
Don't know if I could advertise them in a time of security. Once a week for two weeks, no earlier than 30 days and no less than seven days before the hearing.
Oh, okay. That would have to be like Friday and next week.
We have to advertise the second hearing by Wednesday. Now, let me tell you, okay, and it's your call. And it says, uh, you know, not less than 30 days or, or not more than 30 days or less than seven before a hearing. I've had some solicitors say, that doesn't mean it's seven days apart, Ron. It's for two successive weeks, okay? So you can advertise a, uh, you know, this week if it can make, let's say Friday. And then you can advertise, uh, next Monday.
Right.
That's, that's twice a week for two successive weeks and you're more than seven days out. If you say advertise a second advertisement on Monday, the 18th, I just don't think the focal record will get us in for Friday.
Yeah.
I mean, it could, in theory, you could do it Sunday.
Right.
You could say the first, no, not Sunday, Saturday.
Yeah.
That's the first week and then Monday's the second week. And we could try that if you want to give it a shot. I don't have a problem with that.
I'd, I'd love to, to give that a chance just because, uh, we're so close. But, uh, I mean, I, I would, I would ask Robert if you'd want to make a motion to authorize the advertisement for the hearing on the 27th at seven, uh, and, uh.
I'll, I'll authorize that. I will authorize that.
Okay. I'll second that and then we can approach that. If, if that won't make it, then we can, we can address it, uh, uh, we, we can give permission to, to authorize the advertisement. It's not a problem, uh.
And, and would that be for?
Seven. Yeah. Motion by my, uh, by Robert and second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Well, see, if the, if the record will take the ad by Saturday, you don't have to do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Then we can do Saturday and then Monday. That's once a week for two weeks.
Okay.
We'll be on the 7th day.
That's good.
Hopefully that'll work.
Hope so, but if not, we can, we can always do, we can always do the 11th if we absolutely can.
Let me, let me try that and we'll go from there, so.
Right.
Okay.
Then up next, uh, is discussion of the Economic Development Zone Map Change Ordinance. And this is something that was already previously approved by both Planning Commissions. Really, do you want to talk about that briefly?
Uh, sure. In an effort to ensure that the technical amendments were passed in the timely fashion, uh, it was the board's decision to remove a map change, um, from the original technical ordinance and make it a separate ordinance. Uh, the ordinance that has been presented to the board is only the map change, which is six properties coming into the EV zone on 447. Um, at this time, it's not been sent to Planning Commission, um, from Smithfield or the Monroe County one at this time. And neither Ron nor John have had the opportunity to review it. Um, so it is up to the board how to proceed forward, uh, with this item.
Well, given that Ron wrote the, the previous version of the ordinance, I think that, uh, I think we're safe to authorize requesting the, the reviews. Robert, do you feel the same?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
And I would agree that with that distinction because it's the bigger problem. But the more tedious thing is when you have said, okay, this is what we're going to do. Now you've got to post the property 30 days and then you've got to notify the landowners 30 days ahead of time. And it's the, it's the protocol that will be followed that's more intensive than simply saying, add these properties. So I think that, you know, you could be easily sending it along to the powers, to the two planning commissions and get that moving.
Sounds good. Uh, Robert, make a motion to that effect.
Yeah, um, before I do, Ron, uh, I'm a little, um, confusion. Is it posting for 30 days and sending the notice 30 days out? Or sending the notice 30 days out and then, and then posting seven days or 14 days out? I'm a little confused what it is.
I believe the posting is seven days and the, uh, notice to the landowners is 30.
Right. I, I'll make the motion, uh, to, uh, I'm sorry, whatever we're going to do on it, let's do it.
All right. So with the record reflecting, Mr. Loveenheim moves that we authorize, uh, Planning Commission review as far as the map change ordinance. I'll second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, a follow-up question for you now that that motion is passed. Um, do you want to, do you want to go through this as well? Or are we waiting until the Planning Commission reviews this and send it back?
Well, I think that'll be really quick, so it probably would be prudent to give ourselves permission to authorize, right?
Uh, well, if you do decide.
It's going to be in June.
Yeah, um, because we'll need 30 days to, uh, inform the landowners of this. But if you wanted to schedule the hearing, we can get those letters sent out and we can plan to post the property in time. The only thing to be aware of is if, is if you do do that and for any reason, while both Planning Commissions have already seen this, okayed it and reviewed it, we do get any comments, we might need to pause and restart.
Oh, I think we'll be okay. So I, I would move that we schedule the hearing on that for June 8th. And I know Robert will still be here.
We will need more time than that.
More time?
We need 30 days to inform landowners of the proposed change. We need to provide 30 days to send it to the Planning Commission. Um, so the earliest that we would be able to adopt this would be 20 minutes, uh, wait.
Not the 20 seconds.
Isn't it, isn't it that we need to give the Planning Commission up to 30 days to approve it?
Uh, June 8th. June 8th is okay.
No, it's fine. My apologies.
No, that's, that's, that's all right. Don't, don't even worry about it. Robert, would you second having a hearing on that for June 8th?
Uh, I second that.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Loveenheim. Questions?
What time would that be, Mr. Chair?
Uh, that'll be at 4:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's going to be just like the last two summers. I have a conditional use every meeting or a hearing every meeting. Uh, so next is our discussion of a noise nuisance ordinance. And I'm going to allow Robert significant deference here because he's on the phone participating. But Robert, if you want, I can read the, the framework that you emailed everyone else in the event that you might, might not have been here. If that's all right with you.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that you read it. It's a little easier with communication.
Sure. Okay. So Robert said, "I have studied noise ordinances from Upper Mount Bethel, Easton and Doylestown. I find all of them excessive, cumbersome and finally unenforceable. I believe what we need is a basic set of rules that are more guidelines than they are sound calibration and dispersion levels. I would suggest something very simple as follows." Now, what Robert, uh, lists for objectives are providing relief for residential areas that are offended by loud noise from commercial bars, restaurants or music venues. Providing relief for residential areas from construction sites that are causing offensive noise early in the morning or late at night. And providing relief for residents from the sound of shooting ranges near their homes. These are three things that we've dealt with over the last, uh, couple of years, particularly as the Commonwealth has reopened. Uh, now Robert suggests remedies imposing operating hours for music and entertainment not before 10:00 AM and not after 10:00 PM on weekdays and not after 11:00 PM on weekends, which he includes as Friday and Saturday nights. Construction should not be allowed to begin in residential neighborhoods before 7:00 AM on weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturday. And it must cease on all days by 7:00 PM. No work is allowed on Sundays except by written permission of the adjacent and nearby neighbors. He reminds us this is exactly what they have, uh, for residents that currently live in the Shawnee Valley, uh, planned residential development. And then shooting ranges must be indoors and assured to have sufficient baffling and soundproofing materials so that nearby residents will not be unduly subjected to shooting noise at any time irrespective of hours of operation. Uh, and he reminds us that that portion is already written into the existing economic development zone. So I think what, what Robert lays out here is a fairly reasonable framework. Uh, we've all taken a look at various ordinances and, um, I think this provides us time to sort of get a draft. But seeing as there are people zooming here in person, I think would, that would be a great time to read back on some of those ideas.
Jake, Jake, uh, just let me add, when we are, are speaking of, uh, um, music intruding into a residential neighborhood, it's really talking about outdoor music, not indoor music. And, um, I'm hoping that somewhere in this framework, we can allow neighbors and the venue itself to negotiate a little. You know, if they want an hour more here, then give up an hour there, something like that. And the same thing is true with construction. There may be times when they have to work on Sunday. Well, if they can get the neighbors to agree to it, um, then that's fine. But other than that, uh, at least we have a rule that's the basis for negotiation.
I didn't quite hear what Robert was saying.
Oh, he, he said that explicitly that he wanted, you know, neighbors of, and adjacent landowners to be able to negotiate on some of these items beyond what the, what the township would do.
Well, actually, I talked to Robert about this before, but I really do think that outside amplified on the children. And staff travels and, well, my experience has been that they do not put it at a reasonable level. Well, Rainbow and specifically. And now the campout is opening this Friday, that new campground. And they're having, well, they're, well, I looked at their website. They're going to have, um, they have a pool. They're going to have a useful pool. They're going to have a, something called the den. Also have a, um, a nightclub. So I don't know how this is going to play out with them, but I don't know if, you know, what they're going to do with North outside. But my feeling is that amplify should not be allowed outside. Outside is the one. Because it's a really trouble. And also, well, I don't know. I, I just thought that's out there for you to consider that. Because if you're other than you, like Central Four or whatever shore, if you have such a great family of people, I think that's one thing. But like around the school at Rainbow, I mean, it's a very small area and it's a, it's a. But like around the school at Rainbow, I mean, it's a very small area, and it's, it's a blessing of music, and the balloon out, the balloon, I don't know, hopefully maybe they're gonna learn. Uh, it popped the bell last time, and we'll see what happens back.
Mm-huh.
But, um, so hopefully, you know, that may change, but there's always something else coming up, like the campout is gonna open now, and so, yeah, there's, there's always gonna be issues like that.
True. Absolutely.
Um, the other thing is I, um, had suggested that the, that music should end by ten PM, even on weekends. I think a lot of topics. And I talked to Robert too, I don't know if he, um, about construction, there should be no construction on Sunday.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's.
Oh, okay, I see that, alright, okay.
Yeah, and, and we can circulate this with you too. I mean, I think our interest is in gathering some feedback, so potentially, maybe some sort of survey, because we're, we're about to embark on master site planning for Rivers Edge, hopefully some point this year. Maybe this is not a bad way to try out the means of surveying, you know, the public. Obviously, it's kind of late to go out in newsletter because things are gonna be opening up, but publishing it on our Facebook and our website, it might go a long way toward gathering some input. We always appreciate people participating, being it in person, or remotely, or via the web.
So also, um, Rainbow has been playing music on Saturdays and Sundays, seven hours each day, twelve PM to seven PM. Outside, outside has to have music. So I'm thinking that maybe there should be a limit. If amplified music is allowed outside, we should. Be a three hour time. But that's every weekend as soon as, um, Memorial Day starts. It goes through like October.
Sure.
And I think that's, I think that's.
These are all great ideas to, to put in the pool.
And I don't understand why they need amps. I mean, they're doing anything these days. It's hilarious.
Well, when you say amplified music, obviously if that's something that's gonna be in our ordinance, that is something we have to define, um, is, is there a specific type of amplification, like, like would you still permit stereo speakers? Is it just a special type of?
Well, you know, that's another area I'm not that familiar with. Uh, my husband just lives far.
Oh, okay.
And he said that, you know, the amps today, like some of them are so used and so terrible. Even the small amps, he said, can really throw out a lot of power. So, I mean, I don't know, that's, that's almost like those things that you have to go to the commission for, like, you know, find out. But amplified music is anything that's plugged in, that's what I read. Anything plugged in is. And actually, I think acoustic music should be really encouraged. Acoustic music is great. And, um, and these venues, that, that's all they really need. They have small areas, they really only need acoustic music. Or if they do, it should be very, I don't know, very low level, because even some of the, I read the reviews, some of the guests and customers have complained that, that went to these places, they complained about the level of music.
That's fascinating. That's something that we can.
Okay, I think from.
Uh, you know, point of view of gaining more perspective, that's interesting. Um, did anyone, uh, Robert, do you have anything else, or do you have Ron, John, Lynn?
Uh, I, um, it, it's difficult for me to hear Lynn completely, uh, so, my feeling is, we just need more discussion on this and bat it back and forth with people who are concerned, and I think we can find a solution as long as we keep it simple, and we keep it in some sort of formula where it's negotiable. You know, we'll give a little, you give a little, and somehow we'll get along, that kind of thing.
Ah, okay. Anything else?
Um, well, I've talked to a lot of the neighbors, uh, especially at Eagle Road State, I mean, almost everyone there has an amplified.
Mm-huh.
And so, you know, and I do have a petition going, I still feel like I want.
Yeah, I remember.
I still want, feel like I wanna get more signatures on waiting kind of for the season to stay.
Uh-huh.
We've talked to people again about.
Sure.
You know, how they feel about how it went for the rest of the season.
Yeah, that, that's fair, and that, that, we'd love to have some people come to meetings too, if they would love to.
Yes, and, and actually, um, a neighbor who lives on that Eagle Road has, and I work for an attorney, happened to come in, uh, for, talking business, but, um, I mentioned to him about how I live on Eighth Lane, and he, um, immediately, and I, I mentioned that the supervisors are working on, waiting for them. The first thing he said was, that, about Rainbow. The first thing he said, he said, it is, um, he and his wife both agree that it's fine.
Yeah, sounds pervasive.
It is, it is pervasive, especially, I think, below Rainbow.
Great, well, that's good information to have, and, you know, I think this is something that we're gonna continue to talk about until we, you know, have an ordinance drafted based on this framework, and then we'll, we'll see where that takes us.
Well, then what, what's the next step?
Well, I think we'd, if we can get some more input, um, I mean, today, today is actually one of the less attended meetings, but if, if there were more people, I think it'd be good to just have, you know, some more people, and, and when we have our survey, we'll be happy to email you links, so if you wanna share it with anyone in particular.
Okay.
You know, it won't bear any statistical, uh, significance, but it'll be good to get, uh, more, uh, perspective from other people in the township, so that'll be our goal.
And is the background to be on the West Lane?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Mm-huh. Um, next up is discussion of our, uh, fence ordinance. Uh, I think the board has had the chance to briefly look at it, but I think we might be able to have a better conversation about it at our next meeting. Robert, I don't know if you feel the same way, especially given your, your distance, the fence, the digital fence put between us today?
(laugh) Um, I, I think I would rather be there to talk about it. I had a few specific points, but, um, there's no, there's no rush as far as I know.
Correct. Okay, so, we'll talk about that at our next meeting then. Next item up is discussing, uh, PSATs convention and updates. Just for those that don't know, PSATs is a Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. It's more or less both our lobbying group, but also our think tank of where we, you know, work with our, uh, colleagues from other municipalities across the Commonwealth. Um, this year, we're fortunate that we will be able to send Julia in person to be our delegate at, at the PSATs convention. Um, one of the things that they are doing is considering resolutions, um, of things that, uh, for PSATs to consider, uh, supporting or opposing. Uh, we've had these in our emails for quite a while, and I took a chance to write down the ones. I am fine with all except for one, two, three, four, five, six. There are six that I have opposing positions to what the PSATs board recommends, and just to briefly overview them, and I can give you the list afterward, just so you have all of them, and then Robert and I can take a vote on, you know, what position. Largely, I believe in having, you have the discretion on, on all of these. I think that most of them are reasonable, but the ones that I do not, uh, support, or the ones that I have differing opinions are, are twenty-two, nineteen. Um, I do support having a mandate for local school boards to teach that local government. I think, uh, I, I'm not sure if East Stroudsburg School District has a mandate on that, but, um, I certainly learned about it. Um, there are a great number of amazing teachers, you know, Mr. LeBar and Haley come, come to mind, and spent a lot of time going over, you know, federal, state and local government, and I think local government impacts most people more than they understand. Um, so I would like to see, um, you know, PSATs support a mandate on that. Twenty-two, um, uh, tw- yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, PSATs, uh, take the position where they oppose a resolution supporting the legalization of recreational marijuana. Uh, I, I would support the legalization in a controlled manner. I think Governor Wolf and, uh, a great number of leaders in Harrisburg, including on both sides of the political aisle, supported. It would create a lot of jobs and permit for, uh, additional tax revenue, and there's a lot of things that municipalities are responsible for that unfortunately we don't get money for. I think in a controlled way, just as New Jersey and about, uh, twenty other states have done, would make sense. Um, twenty-two, twenty-five, I support that one as opposed to where they oppose that. That one is, um, PSATs opposes a resolution, uh, that would seek legislation to prohibit discrimination in areas of employment, housing and public accommodations based on sexual orientation, gender identity or expression. I think it's crazy that in this day and age, uh, there is still legal, uh, discrimination based upon who somebody loves. As long as it's not a legal issue, I don't think we should have a problem with people. Um, you know, we have a lot of history in Smithfield and, and in Pennsylvania for the gay rights movement, and I think it's crazy that, uh, PSATs recommends against it because it's not a township issue. I think that discrimination is a township issue. I also oppose resolutions twenty-eight and twenty-nine, which, uh, which essentially stand in opposition to the prevailing wage law. It wants townships to have the right to choose whether or not they pay people a decent living for doing public works, jobs when they're subcontracted out. Um, on that, I have to stand with, you know, working people as opposed to municipalities that are just frankly greedy. And then the last one is resolution twenty-two, forty-nine, which supports leaving municipalities whole in, uh, the redistricting process. Um, that's impossible to do. Uh, the constitution in Pennsylvania already mandates that municipalities, um, are largely kept intact as communities of interest, um, within, uh, legislative districts, both on the congressional level and the state legislative and state senatorial level. And I think that communities of interest often, uh, transcend municipal borders. I just think that we also have a lot of larger municipalities, uh, that it would be unreasonable to suggest not splitting them, especially when you have such odd numbers. There are two hundred and three Pennsylvania state representatives and fifteen state senators, and we have seventeen members of the House of Representatives in, in Washington from Pennsylvania. None of those are numbers that permit, um, any municipalities to, you know, not be split, you know, in any case. Um, I just happen to think that, you know, PSATs is, is a fantastic organization, but on those six, I think PSATs is, is slightly off base, but, Robert, I don't know if you have differing opinions. Those are, those are the only ones I pointed out that I felt were controversial. The, the other ones were mostly, you know, things like supporting, you know, a constitutional amendment that precludes the state from requiring us to do things without giving money, otherwise, those are, that, those are my feelings on, on these resolutions.
Jacob, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
I agree with you on everything that you've, uh, mentioned, and furthermore, uh, I have a low opinion of both the PSATs board and the PSATs president, so I am no friend of this organization, and I think your stand against them is absolutely correct.
Well, I certainly appreciate the solidarity. So, that, that said, I would make a motion to give Julia discretion on the rest, uh, and, uh, support per, uh, a memo written by myself. Uh, support or oppose the resolutions, uh, as described in this meeting.
Second.
Aye, motion by myself, second by Mr. Love and I. Any questions or debate? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I appreciate everyone listening to my banter. I know a lot of these issues seem trivial, but I think that, you know, when PSATs has, has the chance to take a stand for equality, a- and it misses the mark, I, I think they need to be called out for that. Next is a consideration of spring cleanup bid award.
Uh, Mr. Chair, sorry, if we could back up.
Oh, sorry, did I miss?
There are also bylaws and nomination forms, uh, related to the PSAT.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to review those, and if, uh, those are already to be passed as they are.
Yeah, I have no issue with, I don't think Robert has an issue either with, uh, the bylaws, uh, amendments, because they're clerical, and the board nominations, they have no opposition. So I don't, I don't know if we have to. I think the previous motion with giving you discretion should be okay.
Understood. Thank you.
I agree.
Excellent. Uh, so the spring cleanup awards, uh, we've done a lot of inquiries here, which is great, because people must be very excited to get rid of stuff. Uh, we had a lot last year, we're gonna have a lot this year. Um, spring cleanup is being held May eleventh through, uh, May fifteenth from eight AM to five PM each day. The fee schedule is unchanged from last year, um, so we're gonna take a, you know, we're, that's going to be, uh, reaffirmed in, in a moment, but before we do that, we have to award the bid for the dumpsters themselves. Um, I am struggling to find the paperwork, but I knew it was one thousand four hundred fifty dollars per dumpster, and the, the low bidder, and the only bidder, was, uh, GNS Incorporated. So, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, award the bid to GNS.
Uh, Jacob?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. The name of the company?
Oh, GNS Incorporated.
Well, I, I guess I approve.
Okay. Well, I'll take that, I'll entertain it as a, as a motion, and I'll second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next, uh, as we just discussed, our fee schedule for, uh, spring cleanup is unchanged, and it will be publicized, uh, throughout all of our social media and as well as in person here at the township, so I'll, I'll move that we, uh, affirm this year's new fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Love and I. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next in our fund is a discussion of the fee schedule for conditional uses. Julia was kind enough to put together quite a lot of data to figure out, you know, where we're going on this discussion, and Ron also has some, uh, important information for this too.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Julia was kind enough to forward to me these schedules for, I believe, the last two years, and those fee schedules, notably on page two, maybe three, uh, have an escrow note that says in bold that escrow accounts for professional fees include catch of reasonable necessary expenses, providing legal administrative engineering reviews, et cetera. I think if you put that note, my way, I believe, is of an asterisk that's been used for the land development and subdivision matters, uh, to make that part of the conditional use hearings.
Uh-huh.
I think that, that would enable you to now come in and request, uh, you know, the additional funds. Uh, plus, I would also add in there advertising. Now, you don't have to do the advertising necessarily for the land use part of it, but you might there. So, right now, though, I don't see any other basis where we can make a request to ask for more funds, especially on the water gap matter, which is just astronomical.
Right.
The information that the country manager was kind enough to, or office manager was kind enough to port, to me, it's like something like, I don't know, forty-five grand or some crazy number like that.
Correct.
And, and I just don't see that in the, in the schedules that were given to me, but if in fact, you or anyone else do, jump in and let me know, I just don't, I don't see where we can ask for that.
Trenton, if anyone ever asks you what the price of a candy store is, it's forty-five thousand dollars, and Delaware Water Gap, or Water Gap Wellness Center, they own it. Yeah. That said, Julia, you put together data that averaged our conditional uses.
I did. Uh, I took a survey of, I believe, the last fourteen conditional uses the board has gone through. Um, on average, including the Delaware Water Gap, uh, finding every conditional use costs of approximately seven thousand dollars. If you take out the astronomical cost of Delaware Water Gap, you're looking at an average cost of thirty-six hundred dollars per conditional use. Um, after compiling that data, underneath that, you will see what other townships in the area charge, uh, for their conditional use hearings. cost of thirty-six hundred dollars for conditional use. Um, after compiling that data, underneath that, you will see what other townships in the area charge, uh, for their conditional use hearings. Um, in general, some of them are higher than ours with no escrow fees, others are far lower, but they charge escrow fees. Um, so, from here and at this point, uh, we have the information and just really need to decide, uh, where and how we want our fee schedule structured, so, uh, our taxpayers are not footing the bill for conditional use hearings.
I, I mean, I, I think it's crazy that some of these, uh, other areas have it somehow less than ours, but it sounds like some of them have an escrow which allows, uh, for more adequate, uh, billing. Because, I mean, if something is less than the cost, we do return the difference.
That makes sense.
So, I, I mean, I, I think it would make sense to potentially shift to like a two-thousand-dollar escrow and replenishment at like five hundred dollars. Um, because then, then it's, it increased, yes, at the, at the outset, but if we, if they don't spend that, then we're gonna give them the, the, the difference. I think that, um, I mean, because, because this is already covered for all the other land development plans, so really this is only important when it comes to conditional uses. Um, because I, I don't wanna see us lose money. I mean, the average cost is thirty-six hundred dollars without significant operation of Delaware Water Gap, uh, with the, the Water Gap Capital Partners conditional use. All the others are, you know, fairly low, except for, you know, MC Auto and, and, uh, the Suburban Vehicle Lot. I, I think, I think like a two-thousand-dollar, um, escrow basis.
So, then would you consider only doing an escrow for this, or would we also still retain a filing fee to manage cost of, um, intake from the township?
I would go with the, the same, we should.
The escrow system that we adopted, um, just recently, um, I think with land development plans, we talked about assessing a yearly three percent fee or something like that.
We did, if that is something the board wants to pursue, that's a lot of paperwork, um, that we would need to follow up with. Um, and one of the reasons that a lot of areas use a, a flat cost for an application fee is, uh, to obviously make money off that, because we can't do that.
Right.
To prevent us from having to, uh, mark, uh, between our offices, our zoning officers and doing all of the reviewing.
Right. What do, what do we ultimately go with? I know we changed something with our esc-
Escrow agreement, that was the most, that's only the God. Able to go to a full escrow.
Right, but what, what they're not changing around the same time, based on that, when we were considering stuff around Smithfield Gateway. I forgive me if I, if I'm missing something or thinking that we, we took an action that, that we didn't, but I remember specifically, we talked about-
I thought you formalized your decision to, when the escrow account was drawn down to a certain level, the applicant had to replenish it.
Right, I think there's replenishment, and I think we had some assessment of, of an average, like three percent fee. I think we talked about doing it annually or something like that, just for the administrative cost, because we blended your application with Ron's written agreement. That, that's what I remember, and I think it was sometime perhaps in the fall or, or early.
Right, and, and that is, that's the application that we're using for sewage enforcement.
Yeah.
Um, and, and land development as it shows up as well.
Yeah.
So, there's no fee attached with the sewage enforcement, whereas normally conditional uses have a, and you have head costs plus.
Right.
And I don't know if you have in front of you, Mr. Chair, the fee agreements or the fee schedules. If you look at under the subdivision and land development fees, you will see two sections on conditional use applications, and I'm just seeing this now, I didn't write this fee schedule where it says minor subdivisions a thousand, major subdivision, six to ten lots, fifteen hundred, major subdivision, eleven to thirty lots, twenty-five hundred, and then it goes on underneath to say if it's one acre or less, it's fifteen hundred dollars, over an acre but less than ten acres, twenty-five hundred dollars. I don't know what that means. That, that's absurd.
Right, we had developers come in and say the same, because they're unsure what's going to-
Conflicting with what you have up front here. I mean, if you're gonna say, these are what you're gonna pay for conditional use applications, then get rid of the fifteen hundred dollars. And that is, you know, what it is here, or not get rid of fifteen hundred, but get rid of the flat fee, just use this, where it says minor subdivisions is what you're gonna pay, minor subdivision is what you're gonna pay, et cetera, et cetera. Or get rid of this language altogether and simply use the higher amount with the escrow. So, I, I'm, I'm confused when I look at this with respect to, uh, conditional use fee of fifteen hundred, especially then this has not been asterisked. Why is all the stuff before it asterisked with the escrow account, but not this?
Right.
So, I, I don't know. Like I said, I didn't draft this, so I'm a little at a loss to figure that all out, but-
Believe it or not, that's a cleaned up version of the old one, which was in black and red and horizontal.
And maybe it came across my desk and look at it, and, and I did look at it, I don't know if it did, but that, that I would have initially said, wait a minute, guys.
Yeah.
I'm confused as to what you're trying to do there.
Yeah, I think it needs a whole self-clean up, but I mean, I, I guess my feeling, what we could do in the interim, I, I would like to see-
I think you should consider, and again, you're the supervisor, not me, a little bit of a higher flat fee based upon what office manager developed, and then make the escrow part of that, just like you have with the, uh, subdivision and land development matters.
Right. So, perhaps like a two-thousand-dollar flat fee and a thousand escrow or something like that?
Well, see if the two thousand is enough, and if not, then, oh, yeah, same thing, yeah, all right.
I, I would be in favor of that, two thousand and one thousand, makes sense to me.
Well, John shook his head, so I wanna hear what John-
Well, the only, the only thing I would say is unless it's a very simple application, and if you intend to pay our fee for reviews out of the escrow alone, there will be some where a thousand dollars will be enough, but there will be an equal number where the thousand dollars isn't enough.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you're going to first, yeah, I don't know what your two thousand, your initial application cover, if you're gonna start paying some of our fees out of that and then go into the escrow as necessary, that's your choice.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that if we write a review letter and then they intend to respond, and then we have to respond a second time, uh, that won't cover our fee. Also, when I attend a conditional use hearing, I charge my time at that hearing as well.
Correct.
As opposed to charging it to the township. And so, I think you're gonna exceed the thousand dollars at my point.
So, you think like two and two might be reasonable?
I think that's-
Because, I mean, I think the reality here, I think, we talked before about how this is a burden of, the only people that are applying for this, other than, you know, floodplain construction, are people that want to have an automotive, uh, you know, sail line in the economic development zone, or, um, I think in some cases, um, campgrounds and other things in, in our ones, and like, these are not, you know, mom and pop businesses, these are larger corporations. And the other stuff is already permitted by right. I think this is just going to level the playing field. I, I think two thousand flat fee and two thousand escrow, you know, that's the-
Not to cut you off, but that does cover your average cost and thirty-six hundred.
Right.
Two and the two, the four thousand would cover, if we don't use it, they'd get it refunded.
Oh, is that money paid upfront then? So, instead of paying fifteen hundred, they have to pay four thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's how our escrow system presently works, right? And then when it's done, we close out and return the difference.
So, then, here, um, one of the things John has been discussing is using towards our flat fee to cover other expenses from our engineers for enforcement. What we're saying is, give us a thousand dollars in escrow. Would those funds pay out easily? Is there any differentiation between what the flat fee would be used to cover versus what the escrow would be used to cover?
In my mind, no. My mind, whatever amount is paid is used for advertising, legal, engineering, administrative expenses. Whether, say, it's coming out of the four, or whether it's coming first out of the two, and then we go to the other two, still the same. At the end of the day, it's still the same thing in my mind.
Correct. So, then I will renege part of what I said, and if that is the angle that we're taking, let us all just do it all escrow, like you mentioned, the first time around, because then we make sure everything is-
We're gonna have it on hand anyway.
Yeah, and then if we ask our, our, uh, any applicants for two separate checks, first check will go into the general fund as a permit fee, the second check will go into the escrow, and be drawn down upon, uh, and keeping those separate then would complicate using both expenses, funds to cover any expenses taken on by the township.
So, and just do a four thousand dollar escrow program?
You really can't have just a permit fee and say this is the permit.
Right, right.
These have to be based upon what the township is actually spending.
Right.
If in fact Julie is saying thirty-six hundred, if that's what she's saying, keep me, uh, without the water gap, it's a potential additional escrow.
Yeah.
You never know. Thirty-five hundred, something additional escrow is needed. That's how I would say it.
I, I would still be in favor of two thousand, one thousand. Uh, my fear is that we boost it up too high, we're just pushing people who are marginally able to afford this out of the game by saying, don't even bother, you can't afford it. Uh, it's one thing to charge them less and say, this could get a lot more expensive for what you're doing, so we're warning them, but it seems like, um, to me, uh, we should boost it up a bu- uh, for a total of over three thousand dollars, which we're, we're saying now.
I mean, I guess I, I would just say that to, not, not to, you know, to respectfully counter that, is that the places that are applying for a conditional use, I don't think that this is prohibitive for them to do business. Like, uh, the auto sales guy? You know, I think thirty-five hundred is reasonable, because right now, we stiff ourselves with fifteen hundred. I think that, you know, if you do thirty-five hundred escrow, then we'll just, uh, we're gonna give them the difference anyway, because we, we can't really just take two grand anyway, as Ron points out. So, I mean, I, I think thirty-five hundred isn't unreasonable.
Well, um, I'm just trying to stick up for the one guy that comes along in twenty, who isn't a big corporation, who wants to do something here and finds it too expensive, that's all.
You may, Mr. Chair, maybe to sort of cut the baby in half, is say, okay, make the initial application fee two thousand, which we take the money off, and then, once that is used up, then we will make a request for whatever additional money we need. It might be a thousand, it might be two thousand, whatever. Then the initial fee is two, but they understand that they may have to pay for it. I don't know if I would, aren't you burdened by just a thousand dollars as an additional fee, because that may not be enough?
Right.
You would say, whatever the fees are, we'll let you know, and then you gotta replenish that account.
Well, if it's really the same amount of money and we can't pocket the money anyway, neither, you know, as we wouldn't, why not just make it at least a three thousand dollar escrow, and we make sure that we take our costs, you know, off of that, including legal, engineering, uh, and advertising and, and, you know?
That's, that's, you know, that's your decision as a supervisor.
That sounds reasonable to me, Jacob. That sounds reasonable. Three thousand dollar escrow, we take the, our, our fees out of that.
I'd like to, I mean, because if we make the whole thing escrow, then we just make sure that we assess it the way that we do presently.
Just keep it like it says here, say, escrow accounts, you know, so that you're not so in case you get that.
Yeah.
Forty-two hundred dollars.
Replenishment at like two hundred.
You're not stuck with just the three.
Yeah.
So, whatever number, and, and, so if you wanna say three thousand, and then just say, and with an escrow if needed, and then we can, you know, we can do the language.
Right, right, when you say escrow, you mean replenishment of the fee.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That, that sounds reasonably, and Robert, it sounds like you're for the same thing.
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, so why don't we do three thousand dollars, uh, as, as the, you know, initial escrow with replenishment at five hundred dollars? And that's simple, because we can, we can use the same, uh, escrow agreements that we have in place presently. I know this is all cumbersome, but this is gonna help us keep, keep, uh, you know, not hemorrhage money and, and, and make sure that everybody's accountable. All right. I would make a motion to that effect. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, so then the board decides to keep an updated resolution at your next meeting.
Sounds great. Uh, next up is, uh, we're, we're at easier sailing now. Um, so we have consideration of the purchase of a radar sign. This is something that Robert brought up and, and Brian, uh, when, when he had talked about this with us.
Continue on the coastal highway.
Of, uh, purchasing the sign to decelerate traffic, uh, in all sorts of areas in the township. Um, this is something we've expressed using, uh, general fund money for. I think that, I, I would, you know, support purchasing the radar sign a- after the completion of our initial American Rescue Plan Act report, uh, so we know that our money, we, we hit to safe harbor. That makes sense. Robert, it, it's just, my, my feeling is do it as soon as our report is in that way, we're then able to freely use that money without any of the federal regulations coming into play.
Um, that's fine.
Get the process in motion.
My, uh, my only, uh, information about whether it qualifies is from the company itself, who says it does, but, um, I think, uh, we're better safe in, in, um, doing it that way, because it's-
Oh, yeah, no, I, I agree, it's a hundred percent, yeah, it's a hundred percent, uh, allowed. I just think we need the money to be liberated, so to speak, because right now, we can only spend from four categories, but once we fill out, or, we have to formally file the documents. Julia, do you wanna explain it better than I can?
Sure, um, so we, first and foremost, uh, the reporting period for this last year ended on March thirty-first. Um, so what we need to do now is report to the federal government how or how we plan to spend the ARPA. One of the things that has been discussed, and our, and the suggestion coming from Velikovsky Act over on, is that we take this ten million standard deduction, and then apply the ARPA funds payroll, which is government expense allowed under the ARPA Act. Uh, from that point, uh, all of the ARPA programs will be free, uh, so the board can then figure out how to use them however you want. Um, the only thing we'll need to be aware of as we, uh, start spending these funds to cover the payroll expenses on the reporting end of the ARPA, is, that's more than seven hundred fifty thousand a year, we will trigger, trigger a federal audit, so we can spend part of it in twenty-twenty.
Now, I think, look, I, I'm fine with all of that. Um, if worse comes to worse and we have problems, we can always talk about taking it out of the general fund, but let's, uh, let's go along this path that Julia recommends right now, and, uh, hopefully it'll work out.
Great. A motion, uh, to do so would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Lavenheim, second by myself. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next up is considering the, uh, release of twenty-two, of two thousand twenty-two, uh, contributions. Um, Robert and I had the, the chance to review them, they were in the budget, but, Robert, uh, I understand you, you would have a conditional motion to make at this, at this point, since you have some differing opinions on, on the contributions.
Uh, I, the only, uh, contribution I object to is to Pocono Heritage Land Trust. Uh, I was on the board for several years, and I have, uh, at this point, grave misgivings about what should be open space, privately owned, and what should be really parkland, uh, available to all and, and, uh, controlled by the townships. And it's really a question of, if the taxpayers are paying in one way or another, uh, through grants or whatever it happens to be, it seems like they ought to decide what the use of the land is that's being used as open space. So, um, I won't approve that particular one. And, and the other thing, this brings up a, a bigger issue that Jacob and I have discussed, which is that, um, most of the donations we give from the township, which is about a little less than ten thousand dollars a year, are to, let's-
are to, let's call them, uh, legacy charities. Every year, they're in the budget, every year we approve it, but, um, the public has never been really invited to talk about this, and it is the public's money. So, uh, I think maybe next year, in October in budget season, we, we could convene some sort of a, a town hall just to see what people think, and what are the ones that are more important to them, um, that we should give to.
Aye, uh, that said, Robert, do you wanna make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve all the contributions except the one I mentioned, which is to Pocono Heritage Land Trust.
Uh, motion by Mr. Loveenheim, I will second. Uh, just, just for the, the record's sake, I, I appreciate Robert's sentiment. I, I would personally approve, uh, of this contribution, so I'd like to leave that option out there, but, uh, understanding the necessity to conduct business, uh, I'm, I'm gonna vote in the affirmative. So, Robert, now you can cast your vote.
Uh, I vote aye.
Aye, alright, the motion's adopted. Next is consideration for the Superheat Maintenance Agreement. This is very basic and routine. Superheat maintains our geothermal system here at the township. Uh, their rates are largely unchanged, and they do a fine job. I would move that we, uh, renew our contract with Superheat.
I'll, uh, second that.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Loveenheim. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the same is true for our grounds maintenance contract. Uh, while I do express a preference to rebid this, uh, next year, and we actually have to anyway, uh, I believe for right now, we can keep Strasser's Nature's Helper, uh, Nature's Helpers for our grounds maintenance. So I'll move to approve that as well.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Loveenheim. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we've, we've finally done it, we have now reached Resolution five hundred. At our last meeting when we adopted Resolution four ninety-nine, uh, I had asked that Julia find something special for us to commemorate this moment. Unfortunately, we do have something, uh, good, uh, which is, uh, in support of America two hundred and fifty Pennsylvania, which is Pennsylvania's support of America's, I don't wanna pronounce this correctly, semi-quintcentennial, so, alright, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Julia, is there anything you wanna talk about this particular resolution?
Uh, this was proposed by TSET, uh, and it is, uh, support for our two hundred and fifty year anniversary as a country. Um, there are apparently some different commemorative actions that will take place over the next few years. And this is what our township can do to help support that.
Yeah, that said, I'd, I'd proudly make a motion that we adopt Resolution five hundred. Do I hear a second?
Proudly second.
Second by Mr. Loveenheim. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. That may seem insignificant now, but we are gonna need community help eventually, cause this is in two thousand twenty-six, so we have a little time to work on this, but believe me, it's twenty twenty-two now, and they feel like it's still March fifth of twenty twenty, but time does pass. And we can, we can learn some lessons from East Stroudsburg's hundred fiftieth, which, uh, went out, and, you know, they did a fantastic job. So, uh, our penultimate item under new business is consider, the consideration of municipal center masking policy. Uh, I see no reason to punish the individuals that are vaccinated. I think it's now upon those that are unvaccinated to, uh, care for their neighbors and, and get the vaccine. Um, so I, I would move that the, that Smithfield Township Municipal Center no longer require masks for vaccinated individuals.
Second.
Second by Mr. Loveenheim. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, we have, uh, PACT requests, which is, uh, Pennsylvania, uh, uh, group for cycling and trails, or Pocono Area Cycling and Trails. Um, they were at our last meeting requesting, um, our approval for sponsorship, uh, a sponsorship program at Rivers Edge Bike Park. And, cause it was on the agenda, we felt it was best to formalize it here. So do I hear a motion from you, Robert, that we approve the PACT sponsorship program at Rivers Edge Bike Park?
I will make a motion that we approve the P, PACT, uh, sponsorship program.
Second, any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, our, our bills to be paid. They are routine obligations in the amount of a hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. They include, uh, primarily insurance, utilities, uh, legal and engineering expenses, um, and also, you know, road equipment. I will note for the record that Julia was the individual that reviewed the bills, and she did not sign off on her own twenty-two dollar reimbursement. I did so, uh, with no issue on April, uh, twelfth. So, any questions about the bills? That said, I make a motion that we meet our obligations to the amount of a hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Do I hear it? Second by Mr. Loveenheim. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
But were, you know, if it were really a pressing matter, I would move to congratulate Robert for completing this while he drives, which is kind of amazing.
Um, my wife's driving, but, and this worked out pretty well. We're supposed to arrive at five forty-seven, that's about, what, five minutes from now?
Yeah, that's good. So that said, are there any public comments or anything else that we need to address before we adjourn this meeting?
I just have two items, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
You were kind enough to send to me the verification on. I'm gonna have you sign the original one, so I have what the courts like to now say are the wet signature to it.
Oh, sure.
Uh, and I don't know if there's anything with respect to the water company bond. I mean, it would look to me, Julia, that that could probably be released, but I'm not sure about...
I have refused confirmation from both our zoning officer and our roadmaster that it can be. Um, as far as the request for any ordinance is related to it, uh, the zoning officer did not provide any of the information related to it.
Well, I just wanted to see if there's a road or driveway ordinance that we see. Like, you know, when you open up the road, or when you put in the driveway, you have to post so much money. If there is no such ordinance, and if the zoning officer and the building's go to official, and this young man to my left says it's okay, then it's okay with me.
I, I have nothing on that one.
They, um, it, it was ten years ago at this point, and, um, both the zoning officer and the roadmaster, um, they said that, I believe it was northeast two was on the project, and they entirely repaved the road. And it's been fine for as long as it has, so, there's no...
I am prepared to move in by this wire.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Awesome, anything else from you, John?
No.
Alright, Trent, any public comments?
Martha, any public comments?
Nope.
Alright, well, thank you everyone for...
Motion to a chair.
Aye.
Motion to a chair.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Have a good Easter, everybody, okay?
You too, Robert.
Alright, bye.
Bye.